Good afternoon. It is the 12 noon hour, and on behalf of the City of Stanton, I warmly welcome everyone, including local and regional public officials. My name is Doug Gwynn. I serve as city attorney for the City of Stanton, my birthplace. It is tradition that the city attorney temporarily presides for the beginning of this organizational meeting of the Stanton City Council until the election of the mayor, who then assumes the gavel, and then may want to make other recognitions and comments on behalf of the city. On behalf of the city, I congratulate our four newly elected council members, Ms. Oaks, Mr. Claffey, Ms. Darby, and Mr. Robertson. Congratulations. And we extend an added warm Stantonian welcome and thank you, especially to Judges Moreau and Reed, who are taking time out of their busy circuit court schedules to join us for today's proceedings. Judge Moreau, Ms. Oaks' sister, is a Circuit Court judge in the 22nd Judicial Circuit and has made the long trip to be with us. And as an aside, I observe that Judge Moreau and I encountered each other in Richmond back in February, I believe, Judge Moreau, when a statewide bar committee of lawyers unanimously gave her its highest rating, just as it had done before. She is an extraordinarily accomplished and respected judge, and she is a role model for all of us. And Judge Reed is the newest judge in the 25th Judicial Circuit and the first female judge in the history of the Stanton Circuit Court. She may not know or recall it, but we have an intersection by virtue of Tinkling Spring Presbyterian Church, my church home, and as a matter of history, the home church of another esteemed Circuit Court judge of this part of the valley, now deceased Judge William Moffitt. It is a grand history. Today is July 1, as though you didn't know it. It is a day for recognition and a day for celebration, and it is a day for some procedural legalities, all about the organization, what is the new City Council. But before we turn to the legalities, we ought to take a moment to recognize our venue, as lawyers and judges might use that term. Please allow me to note the place where today's Stanton City Council's organizational meeting is being held, A.R. Ware Elementary School, which is owned by the Stanton School Board. We thank the school board, Dr. Smith, Division Superintendent, and the school principal, Brown, and the staff for allowing us to convene here today and for their hospitality. This school at one time was named the West Side Elementary School. In 1979, the Stanton School Board, one of whose members at the time was Mr. Claffey's mother, as history would have it, renamed this school as A.R. Ware Junior Elementary School in honor of Mr. A.R. Ware Junior. Mr. Ware had been the highly regarded principal at the Booker T. Washington High School in Stanton for 17 years, from 1951 through 1968. Mr. Ware was an educator, an administrator, leader in his church and community, and an inspiration to countless children and adults. We stop to remember Mr. Ware for his profound and lasting impact in this community and in various roles over 37 one-half years as an educator in his native Stanton. It was the immense esteem in which he was so highly held that led to the naming of this school for him upon request and resolution of the Booker T. Washington Alumni Association. This momentary pause is especially merited because this year marks the 65th anniversary of the U.S. Supreme Court's second decision in Brown versus Board of Education, sometimes known as Brown II, when the Supreme Court of the United States ordered that public schools be integrated with all deliberate speed. We know from our state's history that racial integration painfully did not occur with speed. Against this historical backdrop, given this venue today, it is only fitting and right that we pay tribute once more to A.R. Ware Junior and to others like him, whose stories may be untold despite their dedication and sacrifice. According to the charter of the City of Stanton, the council shall consist of seven members, who shall be elected at large and shall serve for a term of four years from the first day of July, next following the date of their election. And the charter further provides that the council shall elect one of its members to preside over its meetings, who shall be entitled president, some of you may not know that, the actual term used in the charter, and who shall be ex officio mayor of the city, and shall also elect another member to be vice president of the council to act in the place of the president when the president is absent or incapacitated. Under our city charter, the president and vice president, what we know as the mayor and vice mayor of the council, shall be elected for a term of two years. In similar fashion, the code of the City of Stanton prescribes that the council shall biennially, on July 1, so elect two of its members accordingly. Today is that day, and to those ends, the council of the City of Stanton adopted a resolution on June 25, 2020, to formally recite those considerations and give notice of this organizational meeting. Notice of this meeting has been given in various ways reasonable under the circumstances consistent with council's resolution. And by the way, today's organizational meeting, although being held in person, which is gratifying for those of us who have seemed to have been tethered so tightly to Zoom and other virtual means, is also being held electronically through the Zoom platform with virtual participation by several incumbent members of City Council within the framework of City Council Ordinance 2020-04, which recognizes the emergency and crisis circumstances related to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. The meeting audio, in addition to being available to citizens and others immediately by live stream and broadcast, is being recorded. We thank the city's IT staff and other staff for their continuing exceptional efforts to support this meeting and others of City Council during these challenging times. I now ask the four newly elected members of City Council to step forward to receive their oath of office. We also ask Judges Moreau and Reed to come forward. Judge Moreau first will administer the oath of office to Ms. Oaks, her sister. Judge Moreau, would you proceed with the oath of office to Ms. Oaks when you're ready?
Ms. Oaks, if you repeat after me. I, Andrea W. Oaks.
I, Andrea W. Oaks.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties incumbent.
All the duties incumbent.
Upon me.
Upon me.
As a member of the City Council for the City of Stanton.
For the, as a member of the City Council for the City of Stanton.
For a term of four years.
For a term of four years.
Beginning on July 1, 2020.
Beginning on July 1, 2020.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
If you sign your name.
I'll now ask Mr. Claffey, Ms. Darby, and Mr. Robertson to come forward and ask Judge Reed to administer the oath of office. They will be done one at a time. Let's pick them up.
Mr. Claffey.
Yes, ma'am.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Stephen Ward Claffey.
I, Stephen Ward Claffey.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform all duties.
Discharge and perform all duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As a member of City Council for the City of Stanton.
As a member of City Council for the City of Stanton.
For a term of four years.
For a term of four years.
Beginning July 1, 2020.
Beginning July 1, 2020.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
If you can sign yours. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I, Amy Guffey Darby.
I, Amy Guffey Darby.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform all duties.
Discharge and perform all duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As a member of City Council for the City of Stanton.
As a member of City Council for the City of Stanton.
For a term of four years.
For a term of four years.
Beginning July 1, 2020.
Beginning July 1, 2020.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Please stand. I, Mark Anthony Robertson.
I, Mark Anthony Robertson.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge and perform all duties.
Discharge and perform all duties.
Incumbent upon me.
Incumbent upon me.
As a member of City Council for the City of Stanton.
As a member of City Council for the City of Stanton.
For a term of four years.
For a term of four years.
Beginning July 1, 2020.
Beginning July 1, 2020.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Please.
Thank you.
Congratulations to all of you.
Thank you.
You're now official, except for one other particular matter. I'm asking Stoll Smith, our registrar, to present you with certificates of office. You can't back out now. There's too many.
Okay.
The mask on the office.
Thank you. I apologize for turning my back to you, but it seems to be the arrangement we have here. Let me know if you cannot hear me. I'll step aside in just a moment. We will next proceed with the election of the mayor by vote of the seven members of the Stanton City Council. For this process, I will call for nominations from the floor by City Council members for the office of mayor. No second is required, but it may be offered. Once there appear to be no more nominees, without the necessity of a motion to close the nominations, I'll proceed to state the question as to each such nominee, if there's more than one, in the order received, or at least as I can hear them despite my hearing, until one nominee is elected mayor by majority vote upon poll of council members by the clerk of council. I then will relinquish the gavel, virtual gavel, I guess, to the newly elected mayor, who in turn will conduct the election for vice mayor and preside over the remainder of the meeting. The floor is now open for nominations.
Mr. Gwynn?
Gwynn? I heard several voices.
Is this councilwoman Mead?
Mr. Gwynn, this is Steve Claffey.
Members of council, I think I cautioned you about my hearing, so I'm not sure in what particular order. In fact, I may have heard some voices at the same time. So I'm going to exercise my prerogative, and I'm going to ask you to see if you can help me identify who spoke first. As your first input.
Well, I think I spoke first, actually, but I didn't say Mr. Gwynn, but.
I think I heard.
It's okay. I answered a lot of different names.
Well, I'd like to nominate, if that's okay, I'd like to nominate Steve Claffey to be mayor of Stanton.
Members of council who are on the virtual part of this call, I hear Mr. Holmes is nominating Mr. Claffey. Other nominations?
Mr. Gwynn, I would like to nominate Andrea Oaks for the office of mayor.
And Mr. Gwynn, I would like to second that, even though you said it's not necessary.
So we currently have two nominations, and then Ms. Mead, did you have a nomination as well?
I did, Mr. Gwynn. Thank you. I'd like to nominate Carolyn Dahl to be mayor of Stanton.
Are there any other nominations? Have to confess, I'm not used to so many nominations. I didn't think I had many firsts left in this life, but I think this was one. Are there any other nominations from the floor, meaning the four up here, not down Any other nominations? And now, there's no drum roll. It's not quite that exciting. No other nominations? As I think I heard former mayor Bulley say one time at a council meeting, going once, going twice, going three times. And I still call him Mr. Mayor, by the way. There's no other nominations. The first nomination was of Mr. Claffey for mayor. So the question presented for you to vote on as members of council, shall Mr. Claffey be elected as the mayor of the City of Stanton for a term of two years as provided by the charter? I'll ask the clerk of council to poll the seven members of council.
Mr. Claffey.
Nay.
Ms. Darby.
Nay.
Ms. Dahl.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Ms. Oaks.
No.
Mr. Robertson.
No.
Motion carries.
I believe that, as I was listening to the count, that the actual nomination did not prevail. Want to check your notes on that? I heard, and this is what I heard, I heard four noes and three yeses, which means that the nomination failed.
Our motion.
Now, clerk is.
Motion fails.
Is that copacetic? Okay, thank you. The second nomination that was offered, I believe, was of Ms. Oaks, on memory search link directly.
Yes, sir.
So the question presented is, shall Ms. Oaks be elected as mayor of the City of Stanton for a term of two years? And I'll ask the clerk of council to call the roll, please.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Dahl.
I think it's important to state the reasons for my vote concerning Andrea Oaks as mayor of our beloved Stanton. First, she has displayed a callous disregard for taxpayers' dollars, both in wasteful spending and abuse. Second, she has demonstrated either ignorance or disregard for robber's rules of order and our own council memoranda, which are the City Council's unanimously agreed upon operating rules for council meetings. Finally, and the most egregious in my opinion, is the dishonesty and treachery she showed in the last election. Especially hurtful was the cavalier treatment of our black citizens to get their vote while at the same time conspiring with three other candidates in a Northern Virginia PAC that an honorable, experienced, black vice mayor would lose. For these reasons, I will be voting no.
Ms. Dahl, I have to say you're out of the way. My responsibility. Will you continue calling the roll, please?
Ms. Mead.
No.
Mr. Holmes.
No.
Mr. Robertson. Ms. Oaks. Motion carries.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. I have quite a few folks to thank you, so if you guys can just bear with me. First, I'd like to thank God above, for God led and I followed, and He brought me to the land of milk and honey, to the Garden of Eden, also known as Stanton, Virginia. I'd like to thank my family, my husband, for continuously being the voice of reason. For my children, my children, when other kids were reading Mother Goose, my kids were reading ordinances and city policies. And my sister, Judge Moreau, thank you for continuously being a perfect role model. And to my advisor for giving me words of wisdom. To my treasure, Dan Baxley, for keeping everything in checks and balances and making sure all the reports were due in a timely fashion. To my colleagues, thank you for having faith in me. Also, I'd like to thank all of my supporters and my friends, you guys, you've believed in me, you have stood behind me, and you have absolutely been my greatest cheerleaders. So thank you, thank you. And to all of the City of Stanton, as your mayor, I stand here today, and I pledge my loyalty to each and every one of you. I will be a public servant to each individual of the City of Stanton. I am here to serve you, and I simply say, thank you. Okay, as mayor, it's with great honor to be able to choose our vice mayor. So at this time, I will open the floor for nominations for vice mayor for the City of Stanton's City Council.
Mayor Oaks.
Councilwoman Darby.
I nominate Councilman Mark Robertson for vice mayor for the City of Stanton.
Okay, we have a nomination for Councilman Robertson for vice mayor. Are there any other nominations? If not, Ms. Simmons, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Dahl.
No.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
No.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Mr. Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Motion carries.
We have our new. We have our new vice mayor.
I'll just stay right here. I just want to say thank you, each and every one of you. I want to say thank you to my family, my brother, who was probably my biggest supporter, Timmy Simmons, who led me the entire way. I want to thank each and every citizen that voted for me, and for those that didn't, I can tell you I will do it to the best of my ability. I hope I can earn your support. I will tell you, just from some of the words we heard, we will probably, we may have some contentious council meetings, but we were elected to serve the citizens of Stanton, and we need to carry out their work. As I've heard many times, yes, we will disagree, but hopefully we can disagree without being disagreeable. So I ask for your support so that we can carry on the work of this city and what the people of this city ask for. Thank you.
Okay, the next. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the consideration of a resolution establishing dates for the regular meetings of the council for the city of Stanton for the period of July 2020 through June 2022. Now, this resolution consists of the meeting dates, which will be the second and fourth Thursday of every month, except for the month of November and the month of December due to the holidays. At this time, is there any discussion concerning this resolution? Hearing none, at this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve a resolution establishing dates for the regular meeting of the council for the city of Stanton for the period of July 2020 through June 2022.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Councilman Claffey. Do I hear a second?
Mayor Oakes, I second that.
There's a second by Councilwoman Darby. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please, Ms. Simmons, please call the roll.
Ms. Dahl?
Aye.
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Mayor Oakes?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Claffey?
Aye.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, we have our meeting dates set. The next item is item number D, the consideration of council procedure memorandum one through 15. I'll entertain a motion for the acceptance of the procedure memorandums that did not need any changes.
Mayor Oakes, I move to accept the council procedure numbers one, four, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, and 13 as presented.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Robertson. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Simmons, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Holmes?
Aye.
Ms. Mead?
Aye.
Mayor Oakes?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Mr. Claffey?
Aye.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Ms. Dahl?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Moving on to our next procedure memorandum that involved requested changes, is there a motion?
Mayor Oakes, I move to accept the council procedure number three with the changes as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
Ms. Oakes, this is Councilwoman Mead.
Yes, Councilwoman Mead.
I would like to ask why the request was made to move the invocation from the work session agenda to the regular meeting agenda?
That was done because it's been a tradition for 200 years to have that conducted before the public, because it was believed that the invocation should be directed to the city as a whole and not just for the city council members. That the invocation is not to pray upon the council members, but to pray for the city and its citizens as a whole.
Ms. Oakes, I object to the inclusion of prayer in the regular meeting agenda. Citizens of all religions or no religion are compelled to come before local government bodies on civic, secular matters. They should not be subjected to a religious show or test, or be expected to bow heads and demonstrate religious obedience at a government function. Nor is it necessary to pray on taxpayers' time and dime. Members of government boards are free to pray privately or to worship on their own time in their own way. When government bodies lend their power and prestige to religion, this amounts to a governmental endorsement that exclude one-fifth of the population. Today, one in five adult Americans is nonreligious. This practice inevitably will turn minorities, including atheists, Jews, Muslims, Hindus, and Wiccans into second-class citizens. Even when prayers are "non-denominational," quote-unquote, there is no way a government body may conduct prayer that will not inevitably exclude, divide, and embarrass at least some taxpayers and constituents. Even the Jesus of the New Testament condemned public prayer. Quote, "Enter into thy closet, and whence thou hast shut the door, pray to thy Father, which is in secret." From Matthew 6, verses 5 to 13. Observing a strict separation of church and state will offend no one and include all citizens.
Is there any further discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I just would like to invite some clarification on the, on the motion that's been made.
Yeah, I was getting ready to do that myself. Are you referring to the numbers in which? Number 78 and 79, line 78 and 79 will be changed, number 80, under council procedure memorandum number three, along with 98, 101, 102, 103, 104.
What I was specifically going to refer to is the note beginning at line 121.
Would you please share that?
So, I would, I think it warrants clarity. There was, there have been two sets of proposed revisions concerning this, the subject of the note. And most recently, by email, there was provided to council a suggested revision that would change the language beginning on line, at the end of line 110. So to delete the note that appears on line 123, and then to add at the end of line 110, language that reads "notwithstanding any prior action of council to the contrary." And this was an email that I believe was sent by Ms. Boeard regard to all members of council that had that proposed change, so that the effect would be the same, but without all of the extra language in the note beginning on line 121.
It was my understanding that we agreed through email to accept the second change that was offered by staff.
And so with the result, that the note would be deleted and that the additional language would be inserted on on line, at the end of line 110.
That is correct.
And so I just wanted to be certain for clarity purposes for the minutes that Mr. Robertson's motion includes that most recent proposed revision.
And that's also including all of the remote participation that's set up, correct?
Yes, that, that all would remain without change, correct.
Okay. Do you want to revise your motion?
I, yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion that we...
You're going to revise, revise. We have a motion on the floor. Do you want to revise it?
Leave that is, all right.
Do you want to revise it to include, even though this was agreed upon prior?
Well, I think that if, if Mr. Robertson just indicates that his prior motion includes, we're really confirming here that his prior motion includes the revision that I've just described to council.
So moved as the city manager indicated, yes.
I think that would be adequate.
So is that your intent, Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
And who was the maker of the second?
Councilman Claffey.
So I think if Mr. Claffey could indicate that his second stands.
I would like to second that as stated.
Okay. Is Mr. Gwynn? Mr. Gwynn, are you? The changes that we wanted were to follow the United States Supreme Court's ruling with Grease versus Galway. Mr. Gwynn, can you advise the changes that we were seeking for the invocation?
Talking about the invocation now?
Yes, sir.
According to the U.S. Supreme Court, a body like this one, which is oftentimes a legislative body, its members have the prerogative to offer an invocation, not just a moment of silence that makes a reference to or invokes a reference or a name of a deity that may be affiliated with a religion. I believe, as I worked with the city manager, I suggested a possible alternative of simply to say, consistent with applicable controlling law. And believe it or not, for a lawyer, that actually shortened the number of words rather than making more curse.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the clarification. All right.
Ms. Oakes, this is Councilwoman Mead.
Yes.
I'd like to request that anyone speaking, speak into the microphone. I heard very little of what Mr. Gwynn said.
Okay, we will make that request. All right. If there's no further discussion, Ms. Simmons, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Claffey?
Aye.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Ms. Dahl?
No.
Mr. Holmes?
None.
Ms. Mead?
No.
Mayor Oakes?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Madam Mayor?
Vice Mayor Robertson?
I would like to move to accept council procedure number five with the changes as presented. And so there is no misunderstanding. I'll read it for you. The city manager or designee shall review all applications on behalf of the city for state, federal, or private grants. The city manager shall advise city council of all grant applications. That was stricken. And it now says, "The city manager shall have the authority to approve and submit grant applications on behalf of the city, subject to the review and approval of city council."
Okay, we have a second. Excuse me, we have a motion on the floor. I will entertain a second.
Mayor Oakes, I second that motion.
Okay, Councilwoman Darby has seconded the motion. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I would like clarification on why this is being changed. This is going to take, it's going to add a lot of time to staff to prepare briefings for every grant. And I don't know if someone can give me an example of where staff have gotten a grant that required no match, and it was a bad idea. I'd appreciate hearing that.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Carolyn? The reason that change was made was simply, just as I were, you were. You were elected to represent the citizens of the city of Stanton and their taxes. I would think that you'd like to know what comes in and what goes out.
Mr. Vice Mayor, that information is always available in its entire...
Carolyn, can you speak again? There's a little noise in here.
I said that information is always and has been available to everyone, every transaction, every penny coming in, every penny going out. This is going to take up a lot more staff time to prepare briefings for every grant, some of which are very, very routine. And I don't see what the, I don't see why we would want to do that to our staff for no good purpose. If you can give me an instance where we've received a grant that didn't require a match, that something horrible happened to the city because of taking that money, that's what I'd like to hear.
I really, right at this point, Carolyn, I'm not going to provide you one. I'm simply saying, we're doing it because we want to be as open as we can.
We're just putting another step in getting the grant. You know, I mean, that information's out there. It doesn't cost us any money. A lot of the stuff goes to a lot of, a lot of different departments, like the fire department, the police department, and stuff like that. And, and, and it could, the matter of time it takes to get it prepared and out there could cost us the grant. It, you know, I mean, it could be, it'd take too much time to get the grant prepared. And then everybody's filing for this money, so it could go fast.
I understand your concern, Terry. I just disagree with it.
Mr. Rosenberg? We received an email stating that it's 27 grants?
I'm looking across the room to my assistant city manager, who I think provided those details...
Through an email?
To you, yes, and if... Ms. Boeard, can you, are you able to confirm for council members the breakdown as between the grants that require a local match and those that do not for the last year that we have the information available?
So if I'm recalling correctly, that spreadsheet I sent you had about 25, 27 grants on it. Now granted, some of those were multi-year grants, so they would be approved, and then they would be a couple of years. So you wouldn't approve those every year, obviously. I want to say with the match, the ones that are under the current policy as it's been, maybe half a dozen or so. So, you know, the issue with timing could be an issue. Some of, obviously, a lot of these grants are grants that happen regularly, so we should understand the timing of those. A lot of those start on July 1st, for instance, so a lot of grants could come through, like your first or second meeting in June, to have those ready to go. So we have to work through all that. But it would increase fairly, it could increase significantly the number of grants that you're seeing and that you're approving, if you're going to include all the ones that don't have, that don't currently are seen by you because they don't have the match requirement.
So for the, the most recent year that we have data available, you recall there were half a dozen that required...
Five or six. I counted.
That required council approval?
Yeah, I counted through since last July, just looking at the fiscal year.
Out of two, out of two dozen, is that?
Yeah.
So there would be perhaps on the scale of another 20.
Okay.
Yeah.
That would come to council for, for council's approval where it's not required presently.
So at best, 27. That does not appear to be that many when it comes to having transparency for our citizens.
But all this stuff is out there. I mean, you know, it's not like we try to hide it. You know, it's in the budget, it's, it's, it's on the website. You can see what we're applying for and doing. You know, it just, if we don't have to put in, I understand if we're putting matching money on, that we need to know what it's going for. But for one, of course, you know, if it's for, it's like fire equipment or something like that, that they don't need a matching fund, it doesn't seem like that, that's something that we should even have to put on our docket. It's just nice, you know, it's just nice that they can get these funds, you know, for nothing. But I, I mean, you know, it's, it's, I just hope that whatever, if we do it this way, it will not cost us any, any grants that we could use down the road, because we don't have any money as it is. You know, so it, it, it makes a lot of sense to, you know, not to, and, and makes, make things a little bit harder.
But as you stated, Ms. Boeard, that it could be put on the agenda in advance. So if it's due July 1st, it would be presented in a June meeting.
I think we want to communicate with departments and have them initially probably let us know when they know of grants due dates, the ones that they apply for every year, and a lot of those are like that. There might be some cases where something comes up the last minute. We'll have to figure out what to do in that case, though, because we might have a shorter turnaround time. And maybe that's just as simple as communicating with you all, we have this opportunity, can we, you know, can we figure something out to do so that we can take advantage of this and let you all know? And so there's probably something else we could do there, but I think for some of the grants, many of the grants that have, you know, typical due dates and we know about and we receive every year, we could put a schedule together and try to figure out, you know, how to schedule those accordingly.
All right, fair enough. Any further discussion? Ms. Simmons, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Claffey?
Aye.
Ms. Darby?
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move to accept Council Procedure Number 12 with the changes as presented.
All right, that's, we have a motion on the floor for Council Procedure Memorandum Number 12, and you're going to state it?
I'll be glad to. Basically, spending generally or spending authority for the mayor, it does say that this is an additional to that. No dues or fees of civic organizations shall be paid for a membership of the city, city council, or individual members of city council.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. I'll entertain a second. Okay, any further discussion?
Yes, Madam Mayor, could you elucidate which particular organizations we're going to not support in this manner?
I'll let Vice Mayor Robertson, since he made the motion.
Carolyn, the, the reason that was made, again, as being as open as possible, and I think it was a precedent that was set that I disagreed with at the last council, but we're, we're simply saying, you can belong to any organization you want to. I, I don't care what you want to belong to, but you gotta pay for it, not the citizens.
So, since you didn't give me any examples, I'd like some clarification. Are you referring specifically to the council memberships for the NAACP and for the Stanton Augusta Waynesboro Chamber of Commerce?
The, the NAACP would be considered a civic organization, along with the Stanton Kiwanis, the Rotary, the Chamber, the Greater Augusta Chamber would be considered a marketing, it would not be considered civic, it would, it's considered a business marketing establishment, just like the Virginia Municipal League would not be considered a civic organization.
So why wouldn't we want individual members to join the Chamber if that's what they chose? Because the Chamber is a nonprofit organization as well, so for consistency, I would think we would no longer want to pay for Chamber of Commerce memberships, which are, are way more expensive than the NAACP.
Well, the, again, the Greater Augusta Chamber of Commerce is considered a business marketing establishment. It is not considered by definition a civic organization, so it's separate. It would not apply to this particular procedure memorandum. Any further discussion?
Ms. Oaks, this is Councilwoman Mead.
Yes.
This is specifically about the NAACP membership. Our country is in the midst of acknowledging the fact that racism has continued beyond slavery and the Civil War through the passage of Jim Crow laws beyond the Civil Rights Act and persists as a systemic disease that has denied respect, opportunities, jobs, homes, and economic prosperity to millions of people of color. Is this really the time to pull our support from the oldest civil rights organization in our nation and our community?
Ms., Ms. Mead, Ms. Mead, first of all, I'm gonna tell you point blank, I resent your inference. That is absolutely the most ridiculous thing I've seen for a long, long time. I told you, I said, "If you want to belong to the NAACP, I might well as well, but if I do so, I'll pay for the dad blasted membership. They shouldn't have to." You know, if you want to belong to whatever, that's fine, you do it. Just don't have the citizens pay for it.
Councilwoman Mead, I know where this is stemming from. When the previous city council voted to, in a work session, to allow the mayor to pay for the council to join different civic organizations, at that time, it was discussed about the NAACP. I believe that you want it to become a member as a body of council, because you were not a member of the NAACP already as an individual, like myself, like Councilman Holmes, and at the time, Vice Mayor Oveek higher, so I believe that might be what you're referring to. Fortunately, the city did not have to pay for our membership, because we were already individual members. Is there any further discussion?
Just a point of clarification, that the memberships in the NAACP was brought as a request from the president, the current president of the NAACP, Clarence Duratt, who indicated that other cities bought memberships in the NAACP.
Well, we will no longer be providing taxpayers' dollars for civic organizations such as the Stanton Kiwanis, the NAACP, the Rotary. If an individual council member would choose to join, they may join on their own if this motion passes. This also helps to protect us from any, and Mr. Gwynn, our city attorney, can address this, from any potential liability issue if we were to have an employee that was discharged, and then we would have a conflict of interest being a member of the NAACP. If you had an employee that might be let go, there could potentially be the position of liability that puts this council and the city into, so we are also trying to avoid any position of liability. All right.
And that, Madam Mayor, one more point in that is to reduce our liability. We should no longer be members of the Chamber of Commerce, because there could certainly be liability issues as being members of that.
I do not believe we employ any members that would have a conflict. Ms. Simmons, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Dahl.
No.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
No.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
I move to revert the proposed changes to Procedure Memorandum Number 14 back to its original state, and no changes be made or approved of those changes.
Okay, we have a motion. I'll entertain a second.
Madam Mayor, I second that.
Okay, we have a second by Councilwoman Darby. Any further discussion?
Ms. Oaks, this is Councilwoman Mead.
Yes.
The intention of this change to this memorandum was to give council the ability to avoid what has occurred so often in the past, the, the naming of public streets after Confederate generals and, and, and people who, who, as time and history have proved, simply do not merit that sort of honorific, and this allows council to make a decision based on what is inclusive in our community, what is respectful of all people in our community, and so I strongly support keeping number seven, paragraph seven, in this memorandum.
The way it's written now, the city council can choose to change the name of buildings, streets, or what have you, so the way it's written already covers that, so it's, I believe, Vice Mayor Robertson's motion, because it's redundant?
Yep, yeah, I mean, I'll be glad to read it, you know, the change.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, and we have a second. Once again, any further discussion? Ms. Simmons, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Dahl.
No.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
No.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, that takes us to item number E. I'll entertain a motion for the establishment of the council nominations committee.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, before you proceed on to item E, I think, according to my notes, that memorandum number two and 15 got left out of the mix.
We'll double check. I think two did get left out. One, four, two. It didn't.
All right, thank you for the point of order.
So, two, I think two and 15 have not been addressed yet by council.
You are correct.
Yep. That's why we have you here, Steve.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the changes to Council Procedure Memorandum Number Two under item number four.
Madam Mayor, I move to accept the changes to memorandum number two as printed and as presented.
This was presented to the council in advance. I'll entertain a second.
Madam Mayor, I second.
All right, Councilwoman Darby has seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Simmons, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Dahl.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, the next item will be Council Procedure Memorandum Number 15, line 481. I'll entertain a motion to accept the change for the consent agendas.
If I, if I may, Madam Mayor, there actually were no changes to the, to this memorandum. The note, or the annotation was simply to suggest to you all that this consent agenda procedure is something that has not been used with much frequency, certainly in the time that I've been with the city, but we may, going forward, in an effort for efficiency, group some items together on a consent agenda that could be acted on by council at a meeting with a single motion, always leaving the possibility that at a meeting, council members could ask to have an item removed from the consent agenda and actually discussed thoroughly before it during the council meeting, so we were simply, in our note, suggesting that we might adopt this practice more than it has been used in the recent past, but no changes to it as presented to you.
Madam Mayor, I just make a motion.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
I make a motion that we accept Council Procedure Memorandum Number 15 as printed with no changes on the consent agendas.
Okay, we have a...
Madam Mayor, I'd like to second that.
All right, so we have a motion, and we have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Simmons, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Dahl.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, I think we're finished with the Procedure Memorandum, right? Mr. Rosenberg, okay, moving on to item number E, the establishment of the council nominations committee. I'll entertain a motion for the establishment of the council nomination committee.
Mayor Oaks.
Councilwoman Darby.
I move to approve the establishment of council nominations committee.
We have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
A second.
All right, we have a second by Vice Mayor Robertson. Any further discussion? Yes.
Madam Mayor, I might suggest that it would be appropriate for Ms. Darby to include in her motion the, the size of the nominations committee. As, as a matter of practice, it's...
Can we do that in the next motion when we nominate?
Well, I think it, it makes sense to...
With the establishment, okay.
To designate in the establishment to say how many individuals will be on the committee, and then, once the committee is established, then those seats on the committee would be filled under item F.
Okay, Councilwoman Darby, would you like to rephrase your motion?
I will rephrase the motion. I move to approve the establishment of the council nominations committee to include three members of Stanton City Council.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, is there a second? All right, we have a second by Councilman Holmes. Any further discussion? Ms. Simmons, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Mead.
Aye.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Ms. Dahl.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, that takes us down to item F, the appointment of council nominations committee members. I'll entertain a motion for the nomination of the nominations committee members.
Madam Mayor, I move to nominate Councilwoman Amy Darby, Vice Mayor Mark Robertson, and Councilman Steve Claffey to the council nomination committee.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, is there a second?
A second.
All right, any further discussion? Mr. Rosenberg, are you gonna chime in?
No, ma'am.
Okay, all right, again, any further discussion? All right, Ms. Simmons, if you'll call the roll, please.
Mayor Oaks.
Aye.
Mr. Claffey.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Robertson.
Aye.
Ms. Dahl.
No.
Ms. Darby.
Aye.
Mr. Holmes.
Aye.
Ms. Mead.
No.
Motion carries.
All right, that brings us down to item number G, comments from council members. Well, the Vice Mayor and myself have already spoken, so I'll let Councilwoman Darby say a few comments, and congratulations.
Thank you. I just would like to say this afternoon, thank you all for taking time out of your day to come here and, and join us. This is a very special occasion. I greatly appreciate your support, and ask that you continue to support us as we begin this new role to represent the city of Stanton. I love Stanton, and it is an honor to serve each one of you and all the cities of our, citizens of our city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Claffey, would you like to say a few words and congratulations?
Thank you. The past six weeks since Election Day have gone by in a blur. The elation of being elected has been replaced by the realization of the responsibility involved. I anxiously look forward to the upcoming challenge of serving the citizens of Stanton. I wish to thank all who voted for me and believed in me. I'm a newcomer to the political scene, and I promise to work diligently for all citizens of Stanton, not just those who voted for me, but all citizens of our wonderful city. We had a tremendous turnout during this past election. Over 4,600 individual ballots were cast, and 28% of the electorate participated, which is unheard of for a general election in May. Stanton has asked for a change in direction, and I hope we can all work to incorporate a new vision for Stanton. Special thanks to my family, particularly my wife, who has put up with me all throughout this process. Also, special thanks to my highly unpaid campaign manager, Doug Deegan. Thanks to all of you, the citizens of Stanton, I look forward to serving you to the best of my ability. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Would any other council members care to make a comment?
Ms. Oaks, this is Councilwoman Mead. Ms. Oaks, this is Councilwoman Mead?
Councilman Holmes was speaking first.
Go ahead, Ms. Mead.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Mead.
I think it'd be appropriate to say a few things at this meeting or before the meeting concludes. I, I want to share with you some comments that have been made over the last 24 hours in reference to Carolyn Dahl. I'm, I'm going to share them in phrases and words, but this comes directly from the citizens of, of Stanton. She's been an amazing asset and representative of our city, a wonderful advocate for Stanton. She's done a wonderful job of managing the city and always making sure you put her needs ahead of your own, that she puts her needs ahead of our own. Thanks to all you've done to make Stanton the wonderful place we know. I think I know you well enough that you will continue with your extreme work ethic for the rep for the next two years. You will always be well-informed. You will certainly always know when the numbers do or don't add up, and you will always stand up for what is right. You will always be Stanton's mayor to me. I'm not ready to say goodbye to my mayor. I know I will have to keep going, but it will never be the same. I have watched you take the city to a whole new level with your manners and most of all your skills. I'm not done with you yet. A couple of more words to describe Carolyn: candor and wisdom, integrity, vision, care, a sense of humor, and core values. Wise discernment and ethical government, the face of a kind and inclusive community. Thank you for your good work to keep Stanton moving forward. Outstanding leader and inspiration to us in many ways, leaving a legacy that will be damn near impossible to surpass. Love of all things, fair and equitable. A great mentor, a commitment to the city that you love and that loves you back. No one can fill your shoes or wield that gavel with your authority and good sense. Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Holmes?
I'd like to welcome the new members to City Council, and I hope that we're able to work together. Can y'all hear me? I feel like I'm not coming through very good. I'd like to welcome you all to the City Council, and I hope that we all can work together in a very bipartisan way. And I also would like to thank the people who've left, Ofikire, Jim Harrington, Eric Kern. You know, they, they, they've served the city well. They did a good job. They're good people. And you might not approve of their politics, but they always put the city first. And that's what we have to do. We have to put the city first and, and try to get along and try to do the best for our, our, our community. There's, you can't be just the mayor of one group. You've got to be the mayor of the whole group. And I hope that y'all are really willing to work, because it's going to be a lot of hard work. Thank you.
Any other comments? Hearing none. As mayor of the city of Stanton, I call the July 1st, 2020 reorganization meeting adjourned.